Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is June 10th, 2024, and the time is 5:03 PM. We will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with a moment of silence. President Ward will lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me briefly review the rules of civility and decorum which govern this body. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the city commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks when the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person desiring to address this commission shall complete a comment card for each agenda item the person wishes to address, which comment card shall include the person's full name, address, and the numbered agenda item. If it is not completely filled out, the comment card will not be recognized. Thank you. Administrator Johnson, are there additions, deletions, reorganizations of the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We do have a proclamation proclaiming June 24, 2024, as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. The gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender community is comprised of people from all walks of life who are important participants in our city and local economy. State and federal laws do not provide sufficient protections to individuals facing discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression, which leaves unfulfilled the promise of true equality for many Americans. The city of West Palm Beach prides itself in being a community of opportunity for all, whereby anyone can realize their dreams in our city. The city of West Palm Beach recognizes the worth of everyone in our city and values diversity in race, culture, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression in our city, and is committed to protecting the dignity of everyone in our city. Pride Month is celebrated every June to coincide with the Stonewall riots of June 28, 1969 in New York City, which inspired the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender persons. In 2018, the city of West Palm Beach adopted an inclusive resolution affirming its commitment to address and eliminate bullying at city facilities and in city programs. In 2018, the city of West Palm Beach, by unanimous vote of the city commission, became only the fifth city to fly the pride flag year-round. The citizens of West Palm Beach voted overwhelmingly to retain in its entirety a human rights ordinance affirming the city as a progressive city in which to live and work. The city of West Palm Beach continues to demonstrate its support of the LGBTQ plus community by hosting for the fifth year Pride on the Block, which was held on June 1st of 2024 on the 500 block of Columbus. Therefore, I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the city of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Here tonight to accept this proclamation is Melissa Anderson, Senior Assistant Attorney in our city's LGBTQ plus liaison, and Donna Weinberger, founder of Transpire Health. Is that it? Okay. Am I going to say a few words?
Diana is going to say a couple of words.
Never knew it would work.
I would just, Melissa Anderson, I'm one of your attorneys and your volunteer LGBTQ plus liaison, and just thank you, as always, to the mayor and city commission for supporting the community. It's so important. Thank you.
Donna Weinberger, founder of Transpire Help and organizer for Pride on the Block. And thank you so much to all the commissioners here that support us and our LGBTQ community. And thank you, of course, to Mayor Keith James. I think we did bring a card, Leah, if you want to give that to the mayor. And just, we appreciate everybody here at the city and thank you for giving us this proclamation.
Thank you. All right, we will now turn to the consent. By the way, commissioners, did you want to say anything? All right, we'll turn to the consent calendar, items 7.1 through 7.8. Any comments or questions on consent? 7.1 through 7.8. President Ward.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to administration for the items on 7.8 with the Evergreen Cemetery. I know that's been requested, and I appreciate the funds that are going to be allocated towards that. And Administrator Johnson, as to the fuel tank on Fire Station 2, does that resolve the issues with Fire Station 3 as well? Are they going to be fueling at that location?
I'm going to ask Chief Matty to come up. I don't know that detail.
Good evening, Diana Matty, Fire Chief. The Fire Station 2 tank is half of what is needed. The Fire Station 2 tank is immediately due. We have another year with the Fire Station 3 tank that we're trying to wait on doing that, but the same concept applies that they will be able to fill in zone, so that's going to save time on responses from coming out of zone, so that's the plan.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions on consent? 7.1 through 7.8. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of the items on consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 42-24, authorizing the issuance of an invitation to negotiate for the lease and/or purchase and development of city-owned properties on the Broadway Corridor. Ms. Fariel.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public, Jennifer Fariel, Housing and Community Development Director. Uh-oh. Yes, so a little bit of some history on this agenda item. On November 13th of last year, City Commission approved Resolution 24623, which in essence declared certain properties on the Broadway Corridor not necessary for city purposes and determined, made a surplus determination for those properties. City Commission also authorized staff to move forward with its recommendation to develop an invitation to negotiate, otherwise known as an ITN, to move forward with receiving proposals for the lease and purchase and development of those properties. The properties in question are located on the northwest corner of Broadway and 27th Street in District 1, particularly Commissioner Kathleen Ward's district. And the land area for those properties contains approximately 32,000 square feet or 0.47, I'm sorry, 0.74 acres. And the zoning district for that area, it's located within the B-MUD mixed-use district. Today in my presentation, I'm going to highlight some of the key components of the invitation, which consist of the project goals, the selection criteria, and the evaluation process. A little bit about the project goals and the objectives. This is obviously detailed in the ITN and one of the key components in which staff will be evaluating these proposals. So in essence, staff is proposing a project that provides a variety of mixed uses, including residential and commercial, as it is located, or the sites are located, within a mixed-use district. It is very well-known that this administration, the mayor and commissioners, are very supportive of workforce housing, so we'd like a project that provides various housing options, including those that are between 80 and 120% of the area median income. Staff will be looking at design and those that incorporate some visually appealing elements into the design and projects that enhance the overall quality of the neighborhood. I want to remind you that this site is directly adjacent to single-family residential neighborhoods, so we want to ensure that the projects that are proposed take that well into consideration. We'd like a project that spurs redevelopment in the Broadway Corridor, provides economic impact, and various community benefits. The city continues to commit to small business and minority and women-owned businesses, so we want to ensure that all of that is incorporated into the project, as well as local hiring. And of course, we'd like a project that generates a significant return to the city through the purchase and/or lease price and/or any new tax revenue attributed to the project itself. I want to make it clear that we were only considering projects where all of the parcels are going to be purchased and assembled for a mixed-use, mixed-income housing development. These are five lots that we're looking at. They are contiguous to each other, so we don't want to receive projects where individuals are just trying to develop one parcel. And we want to make note of, and this is very critical within this solicitation, is that there are some upcoming B-MUD zoning regulations that are currently being developed, and that any project that is considered would have to adhere to those zoning changes. As well, we presented this to the city commission, I believe, two workshops ago, where we're working on a workforce housing incentives program. Projects will also have to adhere to those incentives should they want to provide workforce housing on the site. Those provisions are made part of the solicitation document. One final thing is, we will be negotiating a short-term lease of the property to the developer. This is during the time of construction, so once construction is finalized and the project is completed, then we can move forward with the sale. This is very similar to what we did with 8111 to ensure that the project is built and it is not sold and just maintained vacant. The selection criteria. So we were very thoughtful when we developed the selection criteria, so obviously we want a project and a development concept that is consistent with the project goals that I've just outlined. That will take a significant portion of the criteria and how those will be ranked, or how projects will be ranked. Mixed-income housing, that it will be a variety of, I'm sorry, a total of 15 points. The developer's qualification, that's for a total of 30 points. That, for us, is one of the most critical components, making sure that we have a developer that is qualified, not just in development, but in public-private partnerships in developing affordable and workforce housing, and that they have the financial capability to see this project move forward. We're also looking at a project that fulfills the best use for the site and for the adjacent areas, and of course, to the extent where projects are providing great economic benefits, that's for a total of 20 points. So the evaluation process. In this solicitation document, we have an evaluation process that consists of, A, one review committee. So there will be one review committee that will be established, and it'll have at least three internal staff members. So it would be from Housing and Community Development, Development Services, CRA, or any other city department that is selected by city administration. We wanted to ensure that we had the possibility to appoint a technical advisor or a third-party representative to provide an impartial analysis or review, similar to 8111 where we had a third-party consultant provide a financial analysis. We put that into the ITN in the event that this is necessary, which it almost always is. And so the review committee will get together, they will rank the presentations, or I'm sorry, the solicitations received, and the rankings of the committee will then be subsequently presented to the city commission. At this point, there will be various options that the city commission will have to weigh. A, we can select to move forward with direct negotiations with up to two parties. You may decide that you're ready to make a decision and you want to move forward with one proposal, or you may decide that you want to move forward with negotiating with two parties. And I reference 8111 because many of you, if not all of you, were on the dais during this process, but when we did 8111, we negotiated with up to three developers, and we did negotiate with three developers. So this will give us the ability to have a more competitive negotiation process. So we may do that, or you may decide that you want a shortlist. Before you decide who we're going to negotiate with, maybe you want presentations from the developers, maybe you want additional due diligence documents before you make that decision. So at that point, when the rankings are presented to you, you will have the opportunity to make a decision of, again, if you want to go directly into negotiations, or if you'd like presentations and additional due diligence to be completed by staff and then subsequently presented. So if you select to move forward with the shortlisting, the proposers will present their projects to you, will provide any additional information that you may need. At that point, you will make the selection to either move forward with negotiations with two proposers, or again, you may decide that we only move forward with negotiations with one. At that point, we will negotiate terms, and you will be able to give us direction on any additional terms that you would like for us to consider, but those negotiated terms will be brought back to the city commission and considered for final selection by the city commission. Based on those terms, we will proceed with developing a sale, lease, and development agreement. That agreement will subsequently come back and be presented to you, which, at two hearings, because any development agreement needs to be approved by an ordinance as opposed to a resolution. So I wanted to remind us, as we move forward, that the issuance of a solicitation does not give us authority to sell the property. It just pretty much starts the process for which we will accept potential projects and for potential terms to be negotiated. We are in no obligation to enter into any contract to sell the property. Again, this is just to seeking your approval to move forward with issuance of the ITN. We have the right to cancel, reissue, renegotiate, withdraw the ITN at any point throughout this process. You will have time to review the considerations and the recommendations of the committees and the shortlist of those proposals, and again, you have to provide approval for us to negotiate and draft any term sheet and/or contract that will be brought forward to you. I want to remind you again that property sales or any contracts have to be approved by ordinance, which requires two hearings, one of which must be approved by supermajority of the city commission. Finally, and in accordance with the City of West Palm Beach Procurement Code under Section 668, I want to remind you all of anti-lobby and cone of silence provisions that prohibit any firm, corporations, or representatives to lobby or to have contact with the mayor, commissioner, city staff, any members of any evaluation committees to discuss the project. The anti-lobby and cone of silence provisions come into effect once the ITN is issued and until the development and/or purchase agreement is approved and executed by all parties. At this time, I have completed my presentation, and I respectfully request your approval to move forward with Resolution 42-24 approving issuance of the ITN for the properties on the Broadway Corridor. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, Jennifer. I don't know, I don't think you mentioned it, but was there an appraisal on these properties? Or is there a starting off point that we're asking for in this ITN?
So yes, Commissioner, we are required to request, due to the purchase, to the price that is listed on the property appraiser. We did request two appraisals for the properties. They are attached to the agenda item. We're not necessarily requesting an actual amount to be considered. I mean, the appraisals are included in the ITN, but we don't have a specific amount. We have other things that are more critical to this project, i.e., the different project goals, the workforce housing component, but those appraisals are made available in the solicitation documents, and they are estimated at 1.5 million and 1.87 million.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 42-24.
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 114-24, approving the Local Housing Assistance Plan for program years 2024 to 2025, 2025 to 2026, and 2026 to 2027, authorizing the mayor to execute all documents, certifications, and agreements necessary for submission of the plan, receipt of grant funds, and award of grant funds to sub-receipients. Ms. Fariel?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Kimberly Spence, Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development. So I want to start off the presentation by giving a bit of background about the SHIP Program, the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program, and the purpose for the Local Housing Assistance Plan that is before you this evening. The William E. Zdowski Affordable Housing Act allocates a portion of documentary stamp tax on all real estate transactions and conveyance of properties to a dedicated state and local housing trust fund. 70% of those monies go to the local government housing trust fund for the SHIP Program. The other 30% remains with the state through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation for the sale program, which is used for rental assistance program. The SHIP Program provides funds to local governments, such as the city of West Palm Beach, to produce and preserve housing opportunities to serve very low, low, and moderate-income households. The program can serve households up to 140% of area median income. Generally, the program prioritizes lower-income households, especially households below 80% of area median income. In order to receive the SHIP funding, the city is required to develop the Local Housing Assistance Plan every three years, and that plan will outline the activities that the city may undertake during the three-year period. This sheet provides information on the historical funding for the program over the last few years. I just want to point out that the state fiscal year runs from July 1 to June 30. And as you can see in the second column, the original allocation for the program funding has increased pretty steadily over the last three-year period, but we do see, based on the estimated allocation amount for the upcoming fiscal year, a decline from about 1.3 million to 925,000. In addition to the allocation amount that comes directly from the state, the city may also generate some program income funding. This is usually through repayments of mortgages or loans that the city has made with SHIP funding that comes back to the city. So the totals here basically includes the allocation and any program income or recaptured funds that the city may collect during the program year. The plan is organized by strategies that address homeownership and also rental housing. The next few slides, I'll go through all the strategies that are included in the plan, but I want to indicate that and highlight that just because of strategies in the plan does not necessarily mean that it's going to be funded over the next three-year period. Also, the maximum award amounts included here are really a guide for the city and for the program, but again, we have internal policy that may limit the amount of funding that may go to a particular project. So the homeownership strategies include owner-occupied rehabilitation, where funding can be provided for repairs to eligible homeowners to preserve the affordable housing stock. The maximum award amount in this case is up to $80,000. We also have a demolition and reconstruction strategy, which can provide funding to demolish and rebuild homes that are deemed unsafe, and where the cost to rehab the unit exceeds the assessed value. The maximum award is up to 200,000. Some additional homeownership strategies include the purchase assistance strategy here. This is a typical program that a lot of local governments use SHIP funding for. This program provides down payment and closing cost assistance to income-eligible households. The maximum award under this strategy is up to 100,000. And the final strategy under homeownership is the construction and redevelopment strategy, and this is where the city has been utilizing its SHIP funds in recent years to provide funding to nonprofit developers for infill housing. This strategy provides funding for acquisition or redevelopment of affordable housing for homeownership, and the maximum award is up to 120,000 per unit to the home buyer and up to 240,000 to the developer to be used for the construction costs. Under the rehab strategy, we have the multifamily rental housing strategy. This provides funding for the redevelopment of affordable multifamily housing, a project that we are currently working on utilizing this strategy is the Coleman Park Renaissance Project along Tamarind. And under this strategy, the maximum award amount is up to 90,000 per unit or up to 500,000 per project. And we also have our rapid rehousing strategy, which we use to fund the city's housing stabilization program. And that funding is currently being used to provide security deposits and utility deposits for persons that are experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness, and the maximum award for this strategy is up to 20,000. In addition to using these funds for security deposits, the city may also use the fund to provide ongoing rental assistance for up to 12 months or a combination of security deposits and rental assistance. And the final proposed strategy is the disaster strategy. The city can utilize any on-encumbered SHIP funding in the event that a disaster is declared by the President of the United States or by the governor, and the maximum award for this strategy is 50,000 for homeowners or up to 10,000 for renters. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I recommend staff recommends approval of Resolution 114-24 approving the Local Housing Assistance Plan.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, Jennifer. I don't know, I don't think you mentioned it, but was there an appraisal on these properties? Or is there a starting off point that we're asking for in this ITN?
So yes, Commissioner, we are required to request, due to the purchase, to the price that is listed on the property appraiser. We did request two appraisals for the properties. They are attached to the agenda item. We're not necessarily requesting an actual amount to be considered. I mean, the appraisals are included in the ITN, but we don't have a specific amount. We have other things that are more critical to this project, i.e., the different project goals, the workforce housing component, but those appraisals are made available in the solicitation documents, and they are estimated at 1.5 million and 1.87 million.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number 42-24.
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 8.2, Resolution Number 114-24, approving the Local Housing Assistance Plan for program years 2024 to 2025, 2025 to 2026, and 2026 to 2027, authorizing the mayor to execute all documents, certifications, and agreements necessary for submission of the plan, receipt of grant funds, and award of grant funds to sub-receipients. Ms. Fariel?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Kimberly Spence, Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development. So I want to start off the presentation by giving a bit of background about the SHIP Program, the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program, and the purpose for the Local Housing Assistance Plan that is before you this evening. The William E. Zdowski Affordable Housing Act allocates a portion of documentary stamp tax on all real estate transactions and conveyance of properties to a dedicated state and local housing trust fund. 70% of those monies go to the local government housing trust fund for the SHIP Program. The other 30% remains with the state through the Florida Housing Finance Corporation for the sale program, which is used for rental assistance program. The SHIP Program provides funds to local governments, such as the city of West Palm Beach, to produce and preserve housing opportunities to serve very low, low, and moderate-income households. The program can serve households up to 140% of area median income. Generally, the program prioritizes lower-income households, especially households below 80% of area median income. In order to receive the SHIP funding, the city is required to develop the Local Housing Assistance Plan every three years, and that plan will outline the activities that the city may undertake during the three-year period. This sheet provides information on the historical funding for the program over the last few years. I just want to point out that the state fiscal year runs from July 1 to June 30. And as you can see in the second column, the original allocation for the program funding has increased pretty steadily over the last three-year period, but we do see, based on the estimated allocation amount for the upcoming fiscal year, a decline from about 1.3 million to 925,000. In addition to the allocation amount that comes directly from the state, the city may also generate some program income funding. This is usually through repayments of mortgages or loans that the city has made with SHIP funding that comes back to the city. So the totals here basically includes the allocation and any program income or recaptured funds that the city may collect during the program year. The plan is organized by strategies that address homeownership and also rental housing. The next few slides, I'll go through all the strategies that are included in the plan, but I want to indicate that and highlight that just because of strategies in the plan does not necessarily mean that it's going to be funded over the next three-year period. Also, the maximum award amounts included here are really a guide for the city and for the program, but again, we have internal policy that may limit the amount of funding that may go to a particular project. So the homeownership strategies include owner-occupied rehabilitation, where funding can be provided for repairs to eligible homeowners to preserve the affordable housing stock. The maximum award amount in this case is up to $80,000. We also have a demolition and reconstruction strategy, which can provide funding to demolish and rebuild homes that are deemed unsafe, and where the cost to rehab the unit exceeds the assessed value. The maximum award is up to 200,000. Some additional homeownership strategies include the purchase assistance strategy How can people find out? Okay, so typically, we would advertise the availability of funding in the Palm Beach Post and on the city's website. So for a program that directly serves individuals, it would be advertised in that way. Could also utilize the city's newsletter or other means as well to get information out about the programs. Some of the other strategies that we are working with, such as the construction and redevelopment, we work directly with nonprofit partners, such as Neighborhood Renaissance or Habitat, and typically, they would submit applications to the department directly.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just wanted to commend you and your team for the work in this area. I know that homelessness comes to us in many different forms, and I'm very proud of the toolbox that we've built here in the City of West Palm Beach, and that we stay nimble to be able to hear from our nonprofit partners on ways that we can be creative. And, you know, I appreciate this item as well as the one before, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move approval of Resolution Number 114-24?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now turn to Item 9.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance Number 5101-24, a privately initiated request for a text amendment to the zoning and land development regulations to allow the sales of golf carts in the transition sub-district of the Northwood Mixed Use District.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Louis Vicentini, Senior Planner, planning zoning division for the record. This is a second reading. We know changes since the first reading. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions, comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move approval of ordinance Number 5101-24 in second reading? The ordinance amends Section 94210 and 94273 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations to permit the sales of small recreational vehicles with additional requirements within the transition area of the Northwood Mixed Use District and MUD, as the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city and meets the standards for amendment in Section 9432 of the code.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 5101-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida. At Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 7, Special Districts, Section 94-210, Northwood Mixed Use District, Table 7-9, Retail Services, Item 87, Motive Vehicle Sales and Rental, No Service Enclosed, and Article 9, Extra Requirements for Special Uses or Permitted Uses, Section 94-273, Item 49, Motive Vehicle Sales and Rental Establishments, No Service, to permit the sales of small recreational vehicles with additional requirements within the transition area, within the transition area of the Northwood Mixed Use District. Declaring this amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a Conflicts Clause, a Confederation Clause, and a Severability Clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Lieutenant, thank you. Okay, now it's time for comments from the public. We have a few cards. First is Sylvia Perez.
My name is Sylvia Perez, 580 South Zapodilla Avenue, Apartment 108, West Palm Beach. Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak to the commission. The issue that I want to raise, I addressed to Commissioner Fox by email on June 3rd, and she promptly responded the following day, saying that she would look into it. I would like to request the removal of the bench under the shelter on South Zapodilla Avenue between Fern and Evernia Streets, behind the Publix parking lot. Homeless people congregate there during the day and night, littering and relieving themselves in the area. The city workers dutifully clean up every morning, but the next day, there is yet more trash to be picked up. It is a never-ending cycle. I just walked by the shelter, and I saw a man and a woman camp there with all their possessions. They are using a public shopping cart as a trash can, and there is another man camped across the street. I understand that the homeless issue is part of a bigger picture of poverty, addiction, and mental issues, and I would like to ask the mayor and the commissioners to proactively look for solutions, so that the quality of life of residents of this beautiful city of West Palm Beach is preserved, and we do not become California. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alexandra Kornbach?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. I just wanted to bring up-
If you could say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alexandra Kornbach, and I live at 800 Watertower Way in Lantana. Thank you for letting me speak today. I just wanted to address an issue that I think we all have noticed. Anyone who has to come here during the week for work, the parking, it's a little outrageous. The average minimum wage, we're going to give people $15, and we have to pay $2 for parking, and we're not usually getting to write that off our taxes. So I don't think that it's very decent from the local point of view. If you're coming to work during the week, and it's almost $20 to work, and then weekends, you want to go out, it's $5 all day. It used to be the opposite. And I don't want to say I'd like it reversed, but I'd like to see some type of change in order, because we don't even have free parking anywhere excessively, so. And another comment I just wanted to make was, as she brought up, we do have a very big issue with the homeless population. Recently, some people were fined for attempting to feed the homeless population. I don't believe that should be happening. I think that if we look into it, we should allow more of those licensings or regulations, whatever it takes, to let more people distribute food and things for these people, so that they don't end up, you know, behind the Publix begging for handouts, basically. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other cards? All right, I do have several cards. Linda Cores? Corso?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Linda Groves, and I reside in Northwood Harbor. And I'm here to, you know, ask you to please consider the fact that, you know, since Northwood Harbor has become the darling of developers, we just found out that there's a new building going up that's going to be as high as 400 feet. This is by the developers of Alba. They have a new building called The Reserve. And, you know, there's just, there seems to be no real roadmap for the development of our community, which is now, you know, got the spotlights on it. Everybody wants to go there. The developers want to be there. And, you know, we have a lot of issues with, with what's going on, because we're really feeling the brunt of, you know, the trucks coming in, you know, the developers are there, the workers are there. There's a lot of new people there. Our roads are in a terrible state. They need to be looked at and repaired. And, you know, we just don't want to keep coming back here every time a new developer comes up with a new plan. So the last building of Alba, I think, is something like 300 or so feet. The new building proposed is some 400 feet. And really, the question I put before you all is, where does it end? If we don't have any limits in place, if we don't have any guidelines in place, then, you know, it's not a good thing for the residents. It's not a good thing for the future of the community. I'm asking you to really kindly consider that now that space is optimal, and that this has become, when I say this, West Palm Beach has become sort of like a new center. Everybody wants to come here. Everybody's kind of figured out, we have more land, we have less density right now for a while. Let's think in terms of how to preserve, how do we preserve what we have? How do we preserve what keeps us unique and, and maintain quality for us residents and maintain quality for yourselves as well, because you all reside here. So I think the time has really come that we really need to sit down and think about, what is the future of West Palm Beach going to look like? What is the future of Northwood Harbor, a community, a jewel of a community? I mean, there's so many lovely historic homes there. And now they're building amazing, you know, architecturally unique and diverse condominiums that take full advantage of our lovely waterfront. And we all have to find the way that we can cohabitate successfully together, and, you know, not have to fight the traffic, and not have to have our beautiful historic homes completely shaded by the gargantuan buildings. So I'm asking you to really think about this very seriously, consider it very hardly, because the future of our city really depends on it. And, you know, we want to preserve what makes Northwood Harbor so unique and different. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we do have several cards. They don't wish to speak, but they wanted their comment read into the record. Mary Murphy, need a master plan for the North Flagler Drive between 40th Street and 59th Street. Elizabeth Pukowski, the north end needs a master plan to address current and future developments. The community needs infrastructure, services, and traffic issues. There's a few items to be included in a plan for current and future developments in the north end. Angela Ogborne, the north end needs a master plan. And that's all the card. Did you want to speak? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Come on, come on.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Angela Ogborne, a resident of Northwood Harbor and the current president of Northwood Harbor. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts tonight. I appreciate the platform to express concerns regarding several proposed projects coming to Northwood Harbor District, which spans from 45th Street to 59th Street and from east of Broadway to the intercoastal. I'm proposing a master plan for the north end Flagler Drive. In December, our community attended the Related Group's initial presentation of Apogee at 4906 to our neighborhood, where significant issues were raised during the presentation, such as a building height exceeding the allowable limit by 683%. Density setbacks, traffic, and the potential impact for fire, on fire and safety services were discussed. In March, Great Gulf reached out to Northwood Harbor community regarding their recently purchased property of 5400 North Flagler Drive, and in preliminary stages of the planning process, and hoped to meet with us in the coming months. On June 5th, our community attended initial presentation of Alba Reserve. Again, there were significant issues raised during the presentation, such as almost 400 feet height and a seven-story parking garage on the street front facing the historic residential neighborhood. The most disappointing is developers coming into our community, coming into this community, not following the current guidelines and adhering to existing zoning limits. Furthermore, the lack of present contribution towards much-needed community improvements in an area already facing numerous challenge remains a concern. We are still awaiting the implementation of promised improvements from the Icon Marina Village more than a year after they initially pledged. Each time a project comes to the table in our community, we have to go back and forth with waivers and variances. Mistakes happen, as it did with Alba, mistakenly getting more units than allowable under existing zoning limits. Our city has a master plan for downtown Curry Park and Curry, currently Curry South Extension. I'm requesting that our commissioners create a master plan for the north end Flagler Drive that requires developers to give back to the community incentives for much-needed infrastructure, services, and traffic issues to be addressed now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all the cards. We'll go into comments from members of the day, as we'll start with you, President Ward.
Thank you, and thank you to the members of Northwood Harbor Association for coming tonight. I did bring this up already to administration, and I, and I know you potentially are going to be reviewing it, but given the, the needs of the community and the fact that people do want to build there, we were asking for development for a very long time in the north end, and I think that the strain on staff, the strain on meetings, the strain on residents to not have a plan that no developer thinks that they can meet, and continues to ask for very large waivers, if it's 40 feet, and now they're asking for 400 feet, that we probably need to get together and discuss what really works now with development and cost and everything. And so I would hope that administration could potentially review that sooner than later, because they are continuing to ask and, and bring up new ways to develop along that waterfront. And it does put a lot of strain on both the residents and staff with all of these waivers. And so thank you for coming tonight. I also wanted to do, make another couple of comments. The Gaines-Furman, Dr. Monique Brown, are hosting a Father's Day celebration featuring games music and kid-friendly activities on Sunday, June 16th, at Gaines Park and the Community Center, located off Australian Avenue. And the HCD Fiscal Year 24 Annual Action Plan Community Meeting will be hosted at Tuesday, which is tomorrow, June 11, from 5:30 to 6:30, at the Eva W. Mac Community Hub, located on Australian as well. And I think that that's, oh, please come to Northwood Village this Friday night, June 14th, for their nighttime event Nights in Northwood Village, which is Celebration of Creativity, Entertainment, and Style, and to learn about the different CRA projects. The event will be held from 6 to 9 and have a couple of different music acts, so we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge that Juneteenth is officially National, Juneteenth National Independence Day. It is a federal holiday in the United States, celebrated annually on June 19. It commemorates the ending of slavery in the United States. The history of Juneteenth is rooted in the enforcement of the Emancipation Proclamation in Texas on June 19, 19, excuse me, 1885. Even though this date did not end slavery nationwide, it became a significant day for commemorating freedom from slavery across America. Juneteenth is considered America's Second Independence Day, and is celebrated with various activities, cultural events, music, musical performances, and a celebration of soul food. World Sickle Cell Day falls on June 19 each year. It's also known as World Sickle Cell Awareness Day. This day is dedicated to raising international awareness about sickle cell disease and highlighting the challenges faced by patients and families dealing with the condition. Sickle cell, one out of every 13 African Americans in the United States carries a sickle cell trait. So June 19th is identified as shine a light on sickle cell, saluting 15 years of World Sickle Cell Day. On June 15th, the Sickle Cell Foundation of Palm Beach County and Treasure Coast, along with the Village of Wellington, presents its Juneteenth Red Teeth Cultural Festival in celebration of World Sickle Cell Day awareness and Juneteenth. So from 5 to 10 p.m. at the Wellington Town Center Amphitheater, everyone is welcome to attend this free event, and bring a chair or blanket and be ready to have a funky good time.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. The U.S. Coast Guard is looking for input from the community by June 20th regarding a newly proposed federal rule. If accepted, the new rule would make permanent the reduced bridge openings during weekday rush hour travel on the Flagler Memorial, Royal Park, and Southern Boulevard bridges. So if this rule goes into play, it will be only one opening between 7:30 and 9 a.m. and 4 p.m. and 6 p.m., Monday through Friday. So Coast Guard would love input on that. By June 20th, people can reach out at wwwregulations.gov. Obviously, any of us who are driving during rush hour, which isn't me, but the rest of you who are driving during rush hour, this would definitely improve traffic. And also, I just wanted to say a huge thank you and good luck to Rafael Clemente, who will be leaving the DDA after 18 amazing years. I think the downtown looks completely different. A lot of change and progress in his tenure, so wishing him good luck in his new role, and congratulations to Tanika, Tanika West, who will be coming, sorry, not Tanika West, Tanika James, who will be coming in to replace him, and looking forward to working with her. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Paduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank and congratulate Rafael-
I too would like to thank and congratulate Rafael Clemente on his service to the DDA. He certainly will be missed, and I don't have anything else other than to wish you a happy Father's Day, Mayor, and to all the fathers in the room and out there. I hope you have a wonderful and blessed Father's Day.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say Happy Pride Month, and thank you for the proclamation today, Mayor. I think it's really important that the city communicates how open and accepting we are, and I know that many people feel very comfortable in our city, and I'm proud of the efforts that we've taken to accomplish that. Just a few updates in District 5. I know that many people have been waiting for this. The final phase of the South Flagler Drive repavement is scheduled to begin by mid-June, and the area being paved is from Suma Street South to our city border. Also, lately on South Dixie, we've been experiencing some streetlight outages and flickering, and it seems like a dance party going on there with these lights, but FPL has been on top of it from day one and have been working on that, so they have repaired all but six of the streetlights on South Dixie, and the final repairs do require some digging, and they have shared with us that they should be completed by next week. And I also wanted to remind residents in District 5, so south of Okeechobee Boulevard to our Lake Worth border, east of 95, that the police chief does hold regular police chief meetings. They are held at the Cox Science Center STEM Building, and there are two more this calendar year. One is on July 17, and the last for the year is on October 16, and they start at 6 p.m. And I just encourage residents and those, you know, business owners who might be interested in having a conversation with the police chief to attend. And finally, I wanted to welcome Jordan Melamed, who is a recent graduate of Leadership Palm Beach County's GROW program, and she is a rising senior here in the community and wanted to come and hear what it was like at a city commission meeting, so I want to say thank you and wishing you the best in your next year. Happy Father's Day, Mayor, and Commissioner Paduzzi, and to all our dads out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few comments. First of all, Happy Father's Day to you, Commissioner Paduzzi. June 12 is the eighth anniversary of the Pulse nightclub massacre. As you already called it, it's when a mass shooting and terrorist attack took place at a gay nightclub in Orlando. Forty-nine people were killed and 53 people were wounded, mostly, most of them were from the LGBTQ plus Latino community. At the time, it was the deadliest mass shooting in U.S. history. Unfortunately, that record has been broken, so please take a moment to remember all those who lost their lives in that unfortunate incident. Calling all young adults, 15 to 24 years old, who want to join the movement for a sustainable future in West Palm Beach. Are you ready to act on climate change and help the environment through a grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies Youth and Youth-Serving Organizations? Can I apply for a grant of, for up to $5,000 to support actions that focus on environmental change? For complete details about this opportunity, including important dates regarding the Youth Climate Action Fund, please visit wpb.org/green. And as mentioned before, Father's Day is Sunday, June 16, a day to celebrate the special bond between fathers and their children and the profound impact they have on shaping our lives. As Mayor of this city, it's an honor, certainly an honor to be mayor, but being a father is one of the most rewarding roles of my life. Cheers to all the fathers, stepfathers, and father figures making a difference and leaving a legacy of love and strength. Commissioner Warren has made reference to Juneteenth, which is this Wednesday, next Wednesday, June 19, 2024, and City Hall and Mendel Public Library will be closed on that day. That's all I have. Thank you all. God bless you, and God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. This meeting is adjourned.